Straight up, it looks like everybody is here that needs to be here. Where's Brian? Is Brian O'Brien still with us? Fernando, is that, where's Fernando? Did he leave? I don't see Fernando. Why don't we wait a minute to have him come back? He was there, there he is. Okay. All right, all the principals are here, I believe, so I've got 7:30 straight up. So why don't we go ahead and call the regular meeting of the Temple City City Council, October 20th, 2020 to order? And I will ask our Madam Clerk if she will please take roll call.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist? Councilmember?
Here.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Mayor Potem Yu?
Here.
Mayor Chavez?
Here. Okay, thank you. Okay, a couple of housekeeping matters pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N 2920 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17th, 2020. Cities are allowed to hold city council meetings via teleconferencing and members of the public can observe and address the meeting telephonically or electronically. For those who are calling in, your microphone will be unmuted during public comments and when public comment is open during agendized item discussion. You can also email your request to speak to cityclerk@templecity.us. Do that now and indicate on the subject line the item you wish to provide comments. So we will now move on to Item 3 on our invocation, and I'm pleased and thankful for tonight's, who will be providing our invocation, Reverend Eli Albayadi. Miss Reverend Albayadi, good to see you again, or good to hear you. Are you with us? Maybe not.
Sir, I don't, we have one caller and the microphone is unmuted. But I don't know if that's Reverend Albayadi.
All right. Do we know if he's with us?
Caller number six, Reverend Albayadi, are you with us?
I think that's Vince. Is that Vince?
Yeah, that's me.
Yeah, that's Vince.
All right, doesn't look like he's on the line.
Okay. Well, I think since he's not with us, maybe we can get him to join us another time. Why don't we, why don't you join me in a moment of prayer? You know, obviously, we've had a challenge to all of us in the past few months. And of course, we're thankful that, that we have our religions. We're thankful for those who we pray to. And of course, we're thankful to our first responders and all those who watch over us and everyone who has had a challenge through this pandemic. And in God, we ask that you watch over them, keep our families safe and continue good health. And, you know, you know, it's, it's with your help that we can get through these things. So thank you, and in your name we say amen. Okay, so now we will move to the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Thank you very much for that. We will now move on to our next item, which is our ceremonial matters, the presentations. There are none this evening, so now we will move on to public items on items, or public comments, excuse me, on items not listed on the agenda. The city council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. I will begin by asking our city clerk if we have any email requests to speak on this item.
No, Mayor, there are no requests to speak.
Okay, and if you'll unmute the microphones for those who are listening in. For those who are listening in, does anyone wish to speak at this time?
We do not have any callers.
Okay, thank you. So I will close public comments. We will now move on to Item 7, which is our consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion. I will begin this as well by asking the city clerk if there are any email requests to speak.
No, Mayor, there are no requests.
Okay, and seeing that we have no callers, I will entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
One second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. If we could have roll call, please.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember, sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Yu?
Yeah.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we will move on to Item 8, which is our public hearings. Our first item of business is the introduction and first reading of Ordinance Number 20-1048, amending Title IX, Chapter 1, Article T of the Temple City Municipal Code for Accessory Dwelling Units and Junior Accessory Dwelling Units. So with that, Mr. Cook, I will first turn it over to you. And you would go ahead and start us off.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez and members of the council. I believe it's Mr. Cullen is providing this presentation tonight, correct?
Ms. Hestie Lu.
Ms. Lu is providing this present, excuse me, sorry, mixed up. This is, again, part of the by right legislation that the state passed related to ADU, otherwise known as accessory dwelling units or other previous, in another life previously known as granny flats. And we did, you did pass urgency ordinance earlier this year, which then the state has actively reviewing all urgency ordinances or ordinances throughout the state, throughout jurisdictions, provided us with some feedback and some, and with that feedback, Ms. Lu will be presenting some of that to you tonight. So, Ms. Lu? Ms. Lu, I think you're on, I think you're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Thank you, Hestie.
Good evening again, city council. For those audience who are listening in, we're now looking at Slide 2. As the city manager had mentioned, last year, state law, state had passed a series of laws further limiting the city's capacity to regulate ADUs. That is why on February 18th, the city council adopted an urgency ordinance mirroring the state amendments. The city council also directed staff to bring back a code amendment addressing water, sewer, fire safety and design issues. Okay, it's a little bit delayed, so I'm. Now we're looking at the slide 3. So staff had prepared an ordinance for the code amendment for the construction of ADUs and junior ADUs, which was presented to the planning commission on May 12 of this year. The planning commission approved the ordinance and recommended to the city council that the city council adopted. However, on June 30, California Housing and the Community Development Department contacted staff and provided comments about the proposed ordinance. Based on HCD, the comments, staff revised the ordinance and brought it back to the planning commission for the second review. In approving the revision for the ordinance and recommending that the city council adopted, planning commission expressed concerns about the state requirement of removing the fire safety measures and the reduced side yard and rear setbacks. The reduced rear setback refers to the existing 15-foot rear setback for any, any residence to be reduced to four feet rear setback if the construction involved an ADU, whether it's attached or detached. So basically, HCD told staff that the two measures for fire safety, first one is the ADU must be, the requirement that ADU must be within 150 feet of a 20-foot wide road. And the second one is to require fire flow test if deemed necessary. HCD told staff that those are not necessary, and those are not the business of zoning. Let the fire department handle those issues. So staff removed those two provisions from the ordinance. The third one is the two-bedroom maximum for an ADU. HCD commented that since the state law does not mention the maximum number of bedrooms, the city shouldn't impose such a cap on the number of bedroom. The last one is relatively minor. Based on the state allowance of addressing fire safety, staff put a five-foot setback, just one side of it, for a junior ADU. And HCD basically told staff it's not necessary. For the design standards, HCD told staff it's okay for the city to use objective design standards, but the city must make them flexible. In response, staff went back to the ordinance and put in the title block for the design standard stated as the design standard will not apply if they are not feasible. If feasible means if implementing some of the design standard would prohibit the creation of an ADU or junior ADU. In the past, staff has reviewed almost 150 ADUs application based on design standards, which requires ADU to be designed architecturally compatible with a primary dwelling. In this ordinance, staff does not recommend using water capacity. This is, in this ordinance, staff recommended additional design standards, which includes one bedroom, a bedroom must not have an exit door, and ADU must not have more than one common area, and all bedroom must be physically accessible to all occupants, and an ADU must not have more than one kitchen. All of this are for the goal of making sure that ADU remains as one dwelling unit. So this proposed ordinance has included HCD's input, and the staff does not recommend that the city use water capacity and sewer capacity to prohibit ADUs. The city engineer had advised the staff that since ADUs in the past has not been, have not been clustered in one area, and so the sewer infrastructure will not likely to fail within the next five years. And plus, the city does allow larger project to be built in any area when the sewer impact fee is paid. So staff feels that using sewer capacity to prohibit ADUs would not put the city in a strong position to defend its position of prohibiting ADUs in certain area. Ultimately, this ordinance has to be submitted to the HCD for review. And if the city refuses to meet HCD's requirements, the city attorney general can be notified. So with all being said, staff request that city council introduce those ordinance for first reading and schedule the second reading for November 4th, 2020. And now staff is ready to answer any questions you have, and thank you, city council.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Lu. It's very nice to hear from you again. It's been a while since you've joined our city council meetings. Welcome back, at least virtually for now, so thank you for that report. Okay, why don't we begin with council questions? And I'm going to start with Councilmember Mann. Go ahead, council member.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez. The first question I have is for, do we have a standard that requires a bedroom to be a minimum size? Or is that not a design standard?
Yes, I can answer this question. The building code has a standard, which is a minimum of 70 square feet. Little, it could be seven feet by 10 feet. The zoning code doesn't have a standard, and the state does not allow the city to impose any standard on this matter.
So by default, that standard would follow the building code standard?
That is correct.
Okay. And if I understand correctly, HCD is asking us to remove those fire-related provisions, but those are also provisions that the fire department reviews as part of the entitlement process, right? They can't skip that.
Yes, that is correct. The fire department, upon the city's request, will review all the projects. And staff does have the plan to develop a handout to just give the homeowner and the project developer a heads-up that the project may subject to certain standards of the fire department.
And just to clarify in terms of the process, if someone were to build an ADU and go through all the approvals, we wouldn't clear everything until they got all the other agencies, which includes the fire department. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sternquist, any questions?
I just have one question. You mentioned on one of the slides that something about two bedrooms. So did you say, Hestie, that there is no maximum that the state's imposing?
That is correct. We had a discussion with HCD talking about why the city has a two-bedroom maximum standard, because the city is trying to prevent overcrowding. But the HCD literally told the city, because the state laws do not contain such a restriction, the city cannot use it.
You know, I'm curious now, because in South Pasadena, I went to find out about building an ADU, and the maximum there is one bedroom. So I'm wondering, are they just not adhering to the state law with that? I mean, everything else seems to be in alignment except for the bedrooms. You can build up to, I think it's 1,200 square feet, but only one bedroom.
The state laws do allow the city to impose special standards if the city can provide justifications. But that doesn't, that doesn't mean that HCD would accept the city's justification.
It sounds to me like they didn't accept our justification. But maybe South Pasadena's justification, they did accept. Is that correct?
If I can, one of the difficulties with the way this is being handled at the state level is that when a complaint is made to HCD, then HCD reviews the ADU ordinance, but they're not reviewing all ADU ordinances from every local agency. So it could be that, that HCD is not aware of that issue in South Pasadena's ordinance, but HCD is very aware of our ordinance and what's in it.
You know, I'm surprised. They had an equal amount, if not more, ADU applications. I don't know where they are in the process, but it seems somewhere along the line, somebody would have questioned, how come I can only build one? So I don't know. It would be interesting, Scott, if you could talk to them just to see, has nobody complained? Or, I mean, I don't know if they're collegiate enough to talk to you about that. But yeah, I was quite surprised that it was pretty clear, you can only have one bedroom.
Yeah, we'll definitely reach out to South Pasadena.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it sounds to me like there's one person who may be complaining soon. Anyway, okay. Councilmember, Councilmember Viscara, any questions?
Just one, can an ADU violate the 20-foot setback?
ADU cannot violate the 20-foot front yard setback. State, HCD made that clear.
Okay.
Mayor Potem Yu, any questions?
I think, Mr. Mayor, a few questions. I want to go back to Slide number four. Councilmember Mann had already asked this question, but I just want to be completely clear in my mind. That ADU must be within 150, I think it's the slide, yeah, that slide. Must be within 150 feet of a 20-foot yard wide road and a fire flow test required. Those are fire department requirements. So it's not like that they don't have to comply. It just that it's not in our zoning code, that's all. Am I correct?
The fire flow test is dependent on the city's requirement. The 150 feet of the 20-feet wide roadway, yes, it is a standard of the fire review. If the city requires that all projects will be reviewed by the fire department.
Well, it sounds like they should be, because if it's not within the zoning code, somebody else would have to require it. So I would suggest that we make that our requirement. So that's, that's number one question. The second question I have is, on this minimum side yard, five feet, I'm not really clear in my mind how that would be enforced somewhere else. Because I know if they don't want to stay yet, but, but I thought that building code at least says that if it's within five feet of a property line, everything needs to be one hour rated. But isn't there another place where the fire code says you need five feet for five-minute access?
Yes, that is correct. If you were to construct a new residence, the fire department for sure will require a side yard of five feet clearance, not just referring to the setback, referring to the clearance completely, one side of the building. In this case, the five-feet requirement for JADU, because JADU can only be created within the existing floor area. So it doesn't, the requirement would apply to those situation where a JADU is located on the side, the side yard, where the side yard is fairly narrow, for instance, two, two or three feet most of the time. So staff were thinking, maybe it's good to require that at least on one side of the JADU has to be five feet clearance for the fighters to access. But state literally told staff, you cannot impose anything more than four feet for ADUs or JADUs.
Okay, so if it's an existing non-conforming building with only four foot side yard, in old code, they would not be able to do that. But now with the HCD amendment, required amendment, then it would be okay for them to put a JADU in, in an existing non-conforming building, right?
That is correct. The access to the JADU in particular could be narrower than five feet.
Yeah. My last question is that you mentioned that you have reviewed 150 ADU applications. Could you tell me that how long have you reviewed that 150? Was that within a year or two years? Within what time span? I'm just curious, how many ADUs we actually have built in the last year or so?
We are looking at an average of 40 to 50 ADUs per year. 150 years, we're talking about three years period.
Do you see an increase in the application of ADUs?
We are, we don't have the exact estimate, but the pace of constructing ADUs is pretty steady, even within this COVID-19 pandemic.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I'll preface my questions with a comment, and that is, I basically have given up trying to rationalize state actions. This, this is another example of things that just, you kind of scratch your head and you think, what in the heck is going on? So I understand, I guess, the second and third points regarding the limitation of bedrooms and the objective design criteria. I'm still trying to understand this fire safety situation. So the way I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, and Mr. Reimers, maybe you can help us on this. It looks like they're asking us to remove the provision we have related to fire safety, in particular, the five-foot setback rule, which is apparently in our LA County Fire Department code that we actually follow or enforce. But they're saying it can only be a maximum of four feet. But then, you know, what I can't get my hands around is the last statement in the report. It says, "The city can enforce provisions of the fire code. However, these provisions should not be in the zoning ordinance." So I'm not sure exactly what that means. To me, it means that we have competing standards, and who wins?
When there's competing standards between the zoning code, the building code and the fire code, the fire code and the building code, if they're more restrictive, they, those exceed the requirements of the zoning code. So they would have to comply with the fire code.
So, and that would make sense to me. But, so they're basically saying, go ahead and enforce your fire code, just don't put it in the zoning ordinance.
Yes.
Well, okay, but getting, I think getting back to William's point then, you have to go through the whole process. So they're going to be approved as far as the zoning ordinance goes, but then when we get to the fire code, it's not going to be approved. Is that, is that, am I, is that correct?
That's one of the concerns we have as staff. And that's why we want to put together a handout that we would give to applicants early in the process so that they would know what all the building requirements and fire code requirements are. LA County's done a similar handout, and we've looked at it, and we would probably use that as something similar so that people know what the, all the requirements are, not just the zoning requirements.
Well, basically, we would be telling them, or at least alerting them, to the fact that, hey, the zoning ordinance says this, but you should be aware that the fire code says this, and that's going to prevail over what the zoning ordinance says. Is that kind of what we're trying to do here?
That's correct. Yes.
Interesting. Wow. There should be, you would think it would be an easier way to get to that point. Mr., let's see, Mr. Murphy, it looks like you're wanting to say something. Go ahead.
Sure, I just, I just wanted to let you know, I happen to be aware in a, in a larger city where planning and building are more separated, as the council knows, there's a very short timeframe for turnarounds of approvals of ADUs. And so in that particular city, planning and building were running simultaneously on these projects. Planning would sign off on a project, and 10 days later, building would come back and say that the ADU was not approved for exactly the reasons you're saying. The ADU developers are now angry and going to that city council Zoom meeting saying, why is your staff doing this to us? And staff had to explain, we're doing it to try to fast-track. And staff had to explain, we, we're doing it to try to fast track them, but because of what housing and community development has limited planning staff from doing, um, we're, we, we have conflicting requirements and we can sign off on something and they can't. So, uh, yes, it's a mess. And, uh, it's not a mess that your staff has caused or, or any local jurisdiction has caused. But I, I do, I have looked this through and I, I think that, um, given the way that HCD came down, uh, when they saw the draft, I, I think that Scott and his team have prepared a good final product for you and, and our office certainly would, would recommend approval. Because it, it has been essentially checked off by the state and we know that they're not going to, uh, punish Temple City for, for anything, with respect to this ordinance.
Approval of which one? The four foot?
It's, it's the four foot. It's, um, uh, other building issues. Um, the, the four foot, the, the four foot one is, is somewhat unique. In our area, uh, this, the city I, I am speaking of, um, was developed mostly with five foot, uh, as opposed to so many portions of Temple City, Rosemead, uh, some of the unincorporated islands near you where you were developed at three feet or four feet, and then the cities came into being. And, um, part of the reason you came into being was you wanted a little more zoning control. So, um, this is somewhat unique to your area in the West San Gabriel Valley. Um, but it's, it's similar issues where the zoning code is not allowed to touch them based on what HCD says, but the building code and fire code and plumbing code, um, they can go ahead and enforce. It's just a very odd situation overall.
Um, uh, council, if I may add to the clarification, the HCD basically says because JADUs can only be created from the existing floor area, so there shouldn't be any setback requirement, whether it's a four foot, five foot or two foot.
All right, well, I'm not sure that really clears anything else, but, uh, um, I, I do not intend anything I said to be a comment on the work of our staff. I think they've done a fantastic job. And if I were there, I'd be pulling out my hair about now, just trying to deal with all these state, uh, guidelines, I guess, or actions. I, it just makes no sense to me, and I'm sure it doesn't make any sense to you, but it sounds like you've come up with at least a plan uh, to appease HCT, HCD. And I think all you can really do, and I agree with you, that just to give notice as best we can to everybody involved and say, hey, you know, you have to be aware that, uh, there are, there are competing standards out there and, uh, you know, you can't come back later on and say, well, why didn't you tell us? Because we did. So, uh, I, with that part, I agree. So. Uh, all right, well, go ahead. Cindy, you have some other question?
Yeah, I just want to ask a question. I, I was looking on the South Pasadena, um, website because I wanted to make sure that it was one bedroom, and it is, and they also have the four foot, um, side yard requirement. But my question is, is do we have something similar to what they have? It breaks up each, um, section, like the number of ADUs allowed, types of ADUs, lot size, ADU size, the setback. It's all the parking requirement, um, fire safety, shape, materials and style, the height. I mean, it's pretty easy to follow. If, if we don't have something in place, could we have something that's similar? Because it seems like it's, I mean, they, according to state law, they shouldn't be putting only one bedroom. But I mean, we could do it with what we, what the staff has already, um, decided if we approve tonight. I don't know if we have something similar, Scott?
We do. We have a handout, um, for ADUs. Um, we used to have one with a lot of great pictures on it, but the state kept changing the laws and we didn't have time to update the, all the nice pictures. Um, but yeah, it goes through, as you said, it goes through a summary of the ordinance.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I mean, this is really helpful, although I, I, I think some things are long in it, but yes, nobody's complained, but now they're going to get a complaint, as Tom said.
Okay. All righty. Okay. Unless there are any other questions, I'm going to open up our public hearing. I'm going to ask our city clerk if there are any email requests to speak on this matter.
No, Mayor, there are no requests.
Okay, and if there are anybody who is on the line, uh, listening in, if you have, if you would like to speak, please do so now.
We have one caller.
Okay. Okay, I don't hear anything, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And so we will finalize this by going over any final comments, uh, of the council. And again, I'll start with Councilmember Mann.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Chavez. Uh, I think what, what you mentioned earlier, I, I thought, I concur. I, I think staff did a wonderful job in trying to distill all this information to us. It's unfortunate that the state is, I guess, going through all this with a fine, fine-tooth comb. I think it creates more confusion for the customer. Um, and I do appreciate staff mentioning that we are preparing a handout to try to identify these issues that might come up during the entitlement process, because, um, you know, working on the county side, I, I, I know how complicated it could be. All the different agencies and the steps and, and, uh, I mean, we're, we're a single-family neighborhood and I don't know how many of our customers are actually, you know, large firms and sophisticated architects and engineering companies that know everything inside out, but if you have your mom and pop or first time, um, homeowner who's trying to do a project like this, um, I could see them running into some issues potentially if they don't really have a clear sense of all the different provisions that's being thrown at them. Yeah, so I, I know we don't really, it doesn't seem like we have much choice here. Uh, I think we have to kind of follow what, um, HCD has, has provided. And I think what staff is recommending is, is, uh, a nice, um, I don't even want to call it a compromise. It doesn't seem like a compromise. It seems like, you know, just do this or else kind of, kind of situation. But, um, but I appreciate, yeah, the work that went into this and, um, and clarifying it, clarifying it all for us in both the staff report as well as the presentation tonight. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Uh, Councilmember, uh, Sternquist, any final comments?
No, thank you. Just thank you, the staff for being such a pro report.
Perfect. Thank you. Councilmember Viscara, final comments?
No, no further comments and thank you to all.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Yu?
Um, I con, I concur, echo my fellow council member. I think staff done a wonderful job in spite of what HCD has done, and I'll go on directly to say what HCD requires doesn't make sense. Uh, we're trying to help our homeowners trying to do ADUs. Uh, what, what they have done was actually creating confusion. The last thing we wanted was for somebody to think that they got the ADU all figured out and then couldn't get the fire department approval.
Thank you. Um, I, I think the words we were looking for is the staff has certainly done their due diligence here, I think. Uh, they, they, they really have, uh, I think they've done a great job in, uh, trying to make sense out of this, uh, growing, come, more and more complex area, it seems, a- as we, as we move on. And I'm sure this isn't the last we've seen of, uh, of actions in this particular area. But, uh, uh, we do know in Temple City, uh, ADUs are thriving and, uh, whether that's a good or bad thing, uh, uh, they are continuing. So, uh, thank you for staff for doing that. Uh, so with that, I will go ahead and entertain a motion at this time.
Hi, Mayor Chavez. Uh, I'd like to move that we introduce for first reading by title only and waive further reading of ordinance number 20 dash 1048, amending Title IX, Chapter One, Article T of the Temple City Municipal Code regarding development standards for ADUs and JADUs. And then we schedule the second reading of this ordinance for November 4th of this year.
Hey, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, if we could have roll call, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, um, if we could have the, uh, Madam Clerk read the ordinance title, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 20 dash 1048, a zoning code text amendment of the City Council of City of Temple City, California, amending Title IX, Chapter One of the Temple City Municipal Code pertaining to the regulation and development standards for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units.
Hey, thank you very much. So, uh, that will be the order. Um, we'll now move on to item B. Introduction and first reading of ordinance number 20 dash 1049, uh, pool maintenance for the reduction of mosquito breeding. Subject near and dear to, uh, Councilmember Sternquist Hart. Okay, so, uh, why don't we go ahead? Uh, Mr. Cook, who will be presenting this item to us?
Mr. Cook, well, in just a moment, um, yes, uh, this is being brought forward to you as the, uh, the district is asking for a little bit more uniformity in, um, in the sense of the provisions within each code to deal with the idea of like green pools and the breeding of mosquitoes throughout. Um, we, we were able to, some of this is just very, uh, uh, in the sense of not material in terms of reorganizing some parts of our code and then other parts as well. So, Mr. Khan will go over that real briefly.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. Um, the item that you're considering this evening was brought to you at the request of the San Gabriel Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District. Um, they recently began an initiative to identify, um, swimming pools in the area that are not being maintained. And as part of that effort, they have requested that all of the cities in the region adopt a region-wide ordinance, um, that would have the same enforcement and abatement procedures, uh, for unmaintained swimming pools. In October 2019, the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, uh, governing board reviewed that template ordinance and they recommended that the cities in the region adopt that ordinance. Um, and as you know, there's approximately 26 cities, uh, as well as the unincorporated areas in the San Gabriel Valley. And each of those communities has a different, um, regulations related to mosquito and vector control. So, um, that's the primary motive that the, um, Vector Control District wants, is to make sure that there's a unified, uh, approach across the board. I don't really need to explain why this is a concern. As you know, west mosquitoes, um, spread west Nile virus and the Zika virus, um, and the primary source is stagnant water. And by having this unified and cohesive, um, ordinance that would, all the cities in the region would adopt, it'll make it a lot easier for vector control as well as our own court enforcement, um, to do their job, just because the, the regulations will be consistent. What are those contents? Uh, basically, this proposed ordinance would have definitions. Um, it would authorize the city manager to enforce the provisions and the city manager would then authorize, um, the code enforcement officers to enforce the provisions. Um, there's inspection procedures that staff needs to follow. Um, there's pool maintenance standards. Um, so what actually would be considered an unmaintained swimming pool. Um, there's penalty provisions and lastly, there's abatement. And as Brian already mentioned, most of these, actually, all of these, uh, requirements are already in our current municipal code in some form. This ordinance is simply taking all of those components and using the language that the Vector Control Agency asks us to use and putting it in the same place for ease of use and, um, following both for vector control as well as code enforcement. Now, just to briefly kind of go over some of the contents, um, the inspection procedures, uh, basically, these are the same procedures our code enforcement already follow. So if a property is occupied, um, the officer is going to present their credentials to, um, the occupant on the property, request entry and then explain that the reason they're inspecting is because there was concern that there may be, um, an unmaintained swimming pool. Um, if the property is unoccupied, they're going to then make some attempt to reach the property owner. Uh, if for any reason their request is denied, um, the staff can then request an inspection warrant. And, uh, lastly, if, if there's any concern that there's an immediate hazard, that there's a really serious problem on a property, um, staff has the right to do, uh, an immediate entry even without permission. But that's obviously in a very extreme, uh, extreme case. Uh, as far as the pool maintenance standards goes, they're already pretty straight and forward. Um, if you have a pool that has water in it, if the pool is not, if the water's not being filtered or treated, um, and it's not clear and circulating, then it's definitely not being maintained. Um, and if the pool's empty, but there's maybe rainwater, um, debris in the pool, then it's going to be considered an unmaintained pool. And in all of these cases, uh, this ordinance makes it very clear that it's always the owner's responsibility, uh, to maintain the pool. So sometimes, you know, if there's a tenant on the property, a renter, uh, they might try to shift blame and say, well, it's the renter's job. In all cases, it's going to be the owner's responsibility to make sure that the swimming pool on their property is maintained. Uh, then with the penalty provisions, um, as I said, this ordinance makes it very clear that it's unlawful to have an unmaintained swimming pool on your property. Um, and the city has the right to issue administrative citations to a property owner if they are not maintaining their pool. Now, uh, there are a couple of changes that staff is recommending to the ordinance. Um, one of those changes is that, uh, we want to keep the existing fine schedule that we already have in our municipal code for administrative citations. The, um, the draft ordinance that Vector Control gave us, uh, had a recommendation for $500 for the first offense, uh, $1,000 for the second offense and 1,500 for the third offense. Um, our current standards are $100. I'm sorry, this is a typo. It should have been $100 for the first offense, 200 for the second offense and then 500 for the third offense. The reason staff wants to keep this is simply because it makes, it makes sense to have consistency with all of our other code enforcement violations. Doesn't make sense to have, uh, different, uh, fine schedules for one type of offense and different ones for another. Um, so staff is recommending just for the sake of consistency to keep the existing fine schedule that we have in our code.
Can I, um, Mayor?
I'll be happy to answer any question. I just want to just bring it to the final, the recommendation is that you, uh, would introduce the first reading and then waive further reading of the ordinance, um, and schedule the second reading for, um, November 3rd. And now I'll be happy to answer your question.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Sternquist, go ahead.
Um, yes, I, I would just like to share with, um, staff and council that one of the reasons that the fine schedule was much higher was because there were consistently the same green pools, the same problems when the amounts were much smaller. The Vector Control has tried numerous, is working with the county, having early morning meetings where they could impose fines and the, um, owner of the property had to come and there was a hearing similar to what we do for our, um, Public Safety Commission. And it just became very problematic. A lot of the, um, resident owners didn't show up and you'd have five elected officials who came to be part of this hearing. The, um, person said they were going to show up and they didn't. It wasn't until the fees went up higher that they started seeing a lot more success in people not getting to the third tier. It seemed like when it was 100, 200, they didn't really, it, it, it kept going to the, the highest amount, which I believe before was $500. But once it really hit in the pocketbook, it seemed to make a, a huge difference. I also want to share that that I know there's health and safety issues with other code enforcement issues that we deal with unsightly properties. But we have to remember here that West Nile virus takes lives, and it, it's, you know, the, the people who have green pools that seem to be just either ignorant to the fact that, you know, it's causing problems, or they just really don't care. I mean, I would urge the council to go with the recommended amount that both the Cog and the majority of cities went with. I mean, I'd like to at least discuss this with, before we get a motion.
Okay, well, yeah, we'll have that opportunity. We're just asking questions right now, so. All right, so, thank you. Councilmember Mann, do you have any questions with staff?
Uh, I don't have any. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Councilmember Viscara, any questions?
Fernando, you're recommending the higher amounts, is that, did I hear you correctly?
Yes.
And, and they would be what?
Uh, the higher amounts would be 500 for the first offense, 1,000 for the second offense, and 1,500 for the third offense.
Yo.
Yeah, see, it makes a difference.
Hey, hold on, hold on, guys. We're, we're, we're getting a little off-field now. Let's, let's just stick to the questions, and then, you know, everybody will get their opportunity to, to make their comments and their, their push. So, any, any more questions, Fernando?
Oh, that's it.
Okay, thanks. Mayor Protem Yu, any questions?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one simple question. Has green pool been a problem in Temple City?
Um, I would let, I, I think I'll have to let Scott Reimers answer that question, since he oversees code enforcement.
Maybe, maybe rather than say, has it been a problem, because that's sort of open-ended, maybe, maybe if you, if anybody has any numbers, like how many violations are we aware of?
On a typical year, we open less than a half a dozen cases for green swimming pools. Typically, they are often associated with some other violations, or there's a host of different violations at the time. But that doesn't account for any work that Vector Control would be doing through their process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That it, Mayor Protem?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Just one quick question. Okay, so getting back to the fines, you refer to Temple City's, uh, let's see, the existing fine schedule for all violations of the code. Uh, I'm not sure, maybe you can expand on that. Is, you're not saying there that every violate, what, first of all, what code are you speaking about? You're just talking about our entire code, all of our codes? And are you saying that for all of our codes, the violation that carry an administrative fee is 100, 200, and 500?
If I can, Mayor.
What's, what's? Okay, hold on. Let, let's, I think Mr. Cook was going to go ahead and take that one up.
I'll let Mr. Reimers go ahead and speak.
Okay, Mr. Reimers, go ahead.
Sorry, what, what's referenced here is the Public Nuisance Code. So, any violations of the Public Nuisance Section, that's the, that's the fining process. Other violations of the code do have different fines, fine levels, such as fireworks, those are very substantial.
So you're referring just to the Public Nuisance Code?
That's correct.
Because I didn't see that anywhere in here. Maybe I missed it somewhere.
I apologize.
And, I forgot the question I was going to ask. Okay, so, oh, I know. So, don't we have, correct me if I'm wrong, but in that Public Nuisance Code, we have other violations, um, any other wa, are there, any other water violations that relate to mosquitoes? Do we, is that in the code as well, or is that, is that not addressed? Like, I know, I know in the past that Councilmember Sternquist has talked about making sure that we empty out our, our, you know, what is it, flower pots and things like that. I mean, is there, is, do we, I know this is only for the pool, but do we have any, any other ordinances in our Public Nuisance that address that?
Yes, that, those, those issues are handled in the Public Nuisance Section.
Okay, all right. And those, those are the ones that you're speaking about, but the 100, 200, and, all right.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you for clearing that up. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. I'll ask our city clerk if there are any email requests to speak.
Mayor, there are no requests to speak.
Okay, and those of you who are listening in, we will unmute your microphones. This would be the time, if you have anything to say regarding this particular agenda item.
Mayor, we have one caller.
Okay. Does that one caller want to speak on this? Hearing no, hearing no response. I will close the public hearing. And I did forget to mention, Mr. Cohen, thank you for your report. I appreciate the time and effort you've put into this and the explanation that you provided to us. So thank you very much for that as well. Thank you. So we will now go to any final council comments or questions. Why don't we go ahead and start with Councilmember Sternquist? She has her mic on, ready, running to go.
Yeah. Um, you know, Andrew, are you, you're there?
Yes, I am.
Andrew, um, in our code, do we have a public health section of the code?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Because I, I'm thinking that it might be prudent to have a public health section in our code where this would fit nicely in. Um, is it a public nuisance to have a green pool next to you? Yes, but only because it's a public health problem. Um, I don't think anybody's going to hop and skip a fence to go and jump in a, a green pool, even though it might be terrible to look at. But, you know, I, maybe it's just something to look at, to have, uh, you know, a new section where you could put public health issues, especially during the time of a pandemic. We don't know what's going to be coming down the pipeline. But in respects to the green pool, pools and spas and ponds, it's been almost four years of an effort on the mosquito and vector control to actually get to a place where there was substantial enough reason for someone to take care of the problem. And, and similar, we know, with fireworks. When we increased the firework fines over time to where now, I think we, you know, feel that maybe it does make somewhat of a difference than the initial fees. But I, I just think it's something to think about, and maybe we can have a public health section now. My only thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mann, final thoughts?
Yeah, actually, while everyone was discussing, I had a question pop up. Because we, we're talking about this being in our Public Nuisance Code. So is there an overlap between Vector Control, done by the district, and us? Do they issue like a separate schedule of fines? Or do they, are they, do they not have the authority to, to issue fines?
These, these fines that are in this ordinance would only be applied to our code enforcement. So these are the procedures that our code enforcement would follow when doing Vector Control, you'd say.
Right. Well, I guess what I'm saying is, does, um, does the district have their own Vector Control folks that go around issuing citations in Temple City?
Yes. So, so it's kind of an, there's an overlap. So in some safe situations, the city might be the first agency to become aware of an unmaintained swimming pool. In such a situation, our code enforcement would go out and begin the procedures to get that abated. If, well, let me back up. Before, after we become aware of it, we are going to notify Vector Control that there is a situation here. Now, on Vector Control's side, sometimes they become aware of something before we do. I can't say if they consistently notify us. I think they have their own independent procedures that they follow. Maybe Scott Reimers could, could add to this, but as far as I know, they don't always notify us.
Um, Andrew, they have a, if you will, a schedule of, of, a power, not, what's it called? The, like a PowerPoint that can go, supposedly, I thought it was going out, if not monthly, quarterly. And what it does is it, it shows each city how many, you know, complaints they've had, how many green pools, ponds it would have, the, and then it goes to say whether or not that the person has complied over a period of time. I do know that Temple City has always done very well with the amount of pools that we've had, green pools, and compliance has always been very good in our city. So I, I think that's something we can be proud of. But that is available to our city, and you can reach out to Vector Control if you're not getting it, and ask for that report. And it'll show you, they do regular aerial views, and that's how they spot the majority of green pools. The other way is a neighbor calls and complains on their na, on the resident next door or behind them.
Right. Uh, you know, thank, thank you for clarifying that. I, I think I was more alluding to the fact that is it possible for the same owner to be fined twice for the same thing, one by the city, one by the district? And those two fines would have that large disparity, assuming we adopt the fine schedule that's already in our code? Is that possible?
I, I, I'm not aware of the mosquito and Vector Control District's practices, whether they can issue citations or not. But we can, and we do.
Okay.
I gotta, I gotta believe, I gotta believe that, that the Vector Control District has to have some enforcement power. Otherwise, why do they even exist? And I think, I think Councilmember Mann's question is a valid one, one that we probably should know. And, and that, what is, was, one of the questions that I was going to ask is, what enforcement power does Vector Control have? And are we creating a situation, especially with the fines, where is it the first one who gets to them? That's who the fine will be? I mean, I, I don't know. I, I, I don't think that question has really been answered. And maybe we don't have the answer to that tonight. Uh, but, but I think that, at least I would want to know that, uh, before, I mean, it would help my decision, I guess you could say. Anybody want to, anybody want to take a crack at that?
I think Mr. Murphy was about to say something.
Mr. Murphy, go ahead.
I, I, I wasn't going to answer that question, sir. I, I was going to say that when Mr. Reimers and, and his office ran this by our office, you know, certainly we see great value in having the same substantive provisions as other cities in the area. One issue that we had with respect to the fines, when fines go above a certain level, I, I believe it's $1,000, but, but please don't hold me to that. But when they go above a certain level, you do have to make special findings as to why you are setting a fine schedule where you're setting it. Now, I, I honestly don't know whether that state law was in effect back when the fireworks fines went into place, but it's in effect now. So if it is ultimately the will of the council to go with an enhanced fine provision on this, then what we're going to have to do is, is continue this matter to your next meeting so that we can have a, a, a new first reading, rather than have a second reading, because the new first reading is going to include not only the enhanced fines, but the rationale for them and whatever findings we need to make so that the ordinance would be enforceable. So I just want the council to know that as you're moving along and having your discussion, I, I didn't want to jump in and kind of slam you to a halt when it was time for a vote. But, you know, the, the state does generally like to see fines within a certain range. And, you know, as Council, Councilmember Sternquist said, obviously, there, there are some big public health issues here, but we would need to actually put those findings on paper if you were going to go that way. Thanks, sir.
Because I think, I think there, I can think of two special findings. One, we have somebody who has already violated the ordinance twice, and the things they are doing could cause the death of another individual. If those aren't special findings, I don't know what are. So, you know, I mean, we haven't heard from the rest of the council. We're getting a red, kind of ahead of ourselves, so why don't we move this along? I know, I want to give everybody the opportunity to, to speak. And so, go ahead. I want to call on, on Councilmember Viscara for any comments or questions.
Well, I, I agree that we really need to find out if, if Vector Control and the city are, are fining people. In the event that they're not, though, I would recommend, I'll disagree a little bit with Councilmember Sternquist, I think the first fine, being a pool owner, I'm a little sensitive.
You don't have a green pool.
And I don't have a green pool. The first fine should be 100 bucks, and that's a good tap on the shoulder or a wake-up kind of thing. But if that didn't get their attention, and, and it happens again, then I think it should go up to 500, 1,000, whatever, and then even more for a third time. That would be, but in the meantime, I think we have to wait here back to see who actually is, is doing the, the monitoring and fining.
Andrew?
Thank you.
Mayor, can I just ask Andrew that question for Fernando? The, the, what used to take place, and maybe you can help me with this, because we haven't discussed this for two years, is there used to be a, a very nice warning was sent, five to first fine. Do you know if that is still happening, where Vector Control is sending out a warning? I, I believe they try and remedy it very nicely the first time. And then it goes to a first fine, second fine, and a third fine.
I'll have to defer to Scott Reimers, who's the code enforcement supervisor.
Yes, the Vector Control did a presentation to the Cog, and they did mention that they first give a person a warning first, and then they go to the citation process.
Yes.
That makes sense. Okay. Mayor Protem, you?
Uh, I essentially agree with the staff's recommendation. Just kind of curious, again, too, as, if Vector Control will fine people, and I believe they can, I was wondering, would the Vector Control then have what Councilmember Sternquist described, a higher citation or penalty amount? So, but, but for the purpose of tonight, I'm okay with what's being presented.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, I'll be brief. Um, you know, I, I like, I like the concept of getting everything in one spot, and I, I think it's a good idea to address this issue. I have no problem with that. And I think most of the discussion tonight has kind of centered around the fines, certainly. You know, this is where I actually, you know, respectfully disagree with staff's recommendation. My, my, my thinking behind fines is, is there, fines are created as a deterrent to, to disapproved action. That's the bottom line. And I have one word for us, and that is fireworks, okay? We got nowhere with fireworks enforcement, or illegal fireworks enforcement, until we, we, we up those fines. And, and we saw some significant improvement in the numbers in the last few years. I think they have to be somewhat at least related to the fines. To give somebody $100 fine for doing something that I truly believe could cause the death of another individual, simply makes no sense to me whatsoever. There's, there's really no, no balance there. And, you know, I just don't, I just don't understand, you know, how we can justify that. I do like, however, the thought about, and I think, I'm not sure if Vince brought this up, or maybe Benny brought this up, but, and that is the, the warning aspect of it, and that is, or maybe it was Fernando, that maybe we, we put into the code that, you know, we start with a warning, and then we proceed to whatever the fines are going to be. I, I, I don't have a problem with that, as long as, you know, because obviously, the idea is to take care of the problem. We're not going to get uh, as long as, you know, cause obviously the idea is to take care of the problem. We're not gonna get rich. Um, the city's not gonna get rich by fining people with green pools considering the amount we have. But speaking to that amount, you know, I don't care if it's six, if it's four, if it's one. One person, a person can die from that one problem. Okay? That's what we're really talking about here. We're not, we're not talking about uh, you know, uh, we're really talking about public safety, and I think we have to get people's notice, uh, their attention when we're talking about that. Otherwise, it's just gonna fly right over their head. So, um, so that said, um, I, I, I'm not sure, it seems to me, uh, Mr. City Manager that the, the, and, and Mr. City Attorney, that the discussion so far is kinda leaned towards the fact that perhaps we need some more information and considering what Mr. um, uh, Murphy has said about uh, the fines and if we do decide to go in that direction, um, you know, do we need to bring this back uh, to uh, to comply with the special findings rules that you, you talked about? So I, I guess we could start by uh, as we always do, and that is i- i- if someone wants to make a motion at this time, certainly we, you all have the right to make a motion and we can go through that process. Uh, and that motion can also include, of course, um, to carry this matter over uh, to the next uh, to the next hearing, I believe, to perhaps give staff the opportunity to gather perhaps some more information that might help us to make this decision. So.
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, just a couple of points to um, the, one of the reasons that the twenty-six member cities at the vector control district wanted to have a um, ordinance that everyone could have in place was, they have twenty-six cities and a very limited staff. Most of the staff is not doing swimming pool control. They are out um, spraying in the trenches, in the sewers, looking for mosquitoes. So the pools, although important, is not, is a very small part of the work, just because of the number of staff that work for mosquito and vector control. So by being able to have an ordinance that most cities were consistent with in the San Gabriel Valley, it really let our own code enforcement become the primary source, if you would, of being able to handle um, non-compliant pools in the city. To take some of the weight off of the mosquito district so they could do what they're supposed to be doing day in, day out. My second question is to Greg is, so it wouldn't be enough for a finding that twenty-five other cities found this to be the, the best, you know, type of fine for people who weren't compliant since it was so well vetted out with every city having a member on the mosquito board?
I, I, I think what I'm saying, for, for clarity's sake, is the ordinance actually has to have the findings in there. And so we would be substantially changing the ordinance between tonight and the next meeting. And so because of that substantial change, we would have to do a first reading all over again. That, that's, that's my main issue, not whether we can work up the findings. I'm certain that we can, given your direction, uh, i- if you, as a group of five, give us that direction. But we need to actually go through the process and bring you a document that you can um, take to first reading, um, because the changes are big enough that they're not um, they, they surpass the level that we could adopt tonight and go to second reading immediately, um, just as a matter of state law.
Is there any amount larger than what's um, been suggested that wouldn't require that? Is there like, is it fifteen hundred that kinda kicks us to the next meeting or could you, you know?
My, my, my recollection is that the one thousand is kind of the breaking point. Uh, and if it's the will of the council to uh, be more consistent with other nearby cities, then you know, we would, we would be at uh, what, what Mr. Remers said earlier and, and Mr. Cohen said earlier. Um, so I, I would want to give you what you need to put a really good ordinance on the books that fulfills your direction, uh, rather than rush it through um, and, and have something that we're ultimately going to want to change anyway.
Right, well, I'm just thinking if we made it five hundred, seven fifty, and a thousand, would that be? Would we be okay? Because even that first fine of five hundred is significant amount to make someone think about, hey, listen, I already paid five hundred bucks. It's, it's not chump change. I mean, to me anyway.
Right, right. My, again, my, my concern is the hitting a thousand and, and um, you know, I don't have the law sitting in front of me at this point, but in the past, when, whenever we've hit fines that hit a thousand or higher, uh, we wind up having to make those special findings.
Can we make nine ninety-nine?
Let me, can I, can I make a suggestion to kinda just move this along? So uh, it, it appears that, you know, and I, I don't, it doesn't do us any good to be speculating. I think to give Mr. Murphy the opportunity to, to vet this out and find exactly uh, where we're at, and, and I, and again, without making any decisions, and we can still make the same decision as uh, as far as what staff is recommending, but I think um, in order to provide us with the information as to what we need to do, I think the opportunity to give Mr. Murphy the opportunity to research it and, and give us those, those options or those tools might uh, we might benefit by continuing this matter to the next, next meeting. Um, and I would actually uh, make that motion uh, that we do so. And so since I have made the motion, uh, I would like to know if we can get a second to that motion.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vince. All right, so we have a motion and a second to continue this matter to our next meeting with the instructions or with the, the, hearing the dialogue that we've had this evening. Uh, can we have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Oh, wait a minute, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What, what, what are you asking the staff to do to find out?
Asking them, well, we're asking, well, all we're really doing is we're saying, let's continue this matter. The motion has been made to continue this matter to the next hearing. There has been a second. The substance of the matter is that uh, our staff, including our city attorney, have heard uh, different information tonight. We, we need to know, for example, if we are going to go, if we are going to go with the higher fines, what type of special um, findings do we need to make and do we want to go that route? I believe that even when it's brought back next meeting, we, we're not making the decision one way or another at this time to go with any type of fine schedule. That's still to be determined, correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Correct, sir.
Does that clear that up a little bit, Fernando?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem U?
Yeah.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, so thank you very much. It was a good discussion. I think uh, some good, good points were made and I think, as always, this council wants to make the most uh, informed decision that we can make, and I think getting some more of this information uh, before us will allow us to do that. So thank you for your time and uh, look forward to hearing back from you guys the next meeting. Okay, with that, we will now move on to uh, item nine, unfinished business. There is none. And I think before we move on to item ten, why don't we take a ten-minute break? I've got eight fifty. We'll come back at nine o'clock and we'll finish off this meeting. So let's take a ten-minute break. We'll come back right at nine o'clock. Thank you. I've got everybody back. Uh, I saw Cynthia, I can see William, I see Vince, uh, all the principals are there. So uh, why don't we go ahead and get back into this? Uh, we will now move on to item ten, our new business, ordinance twenty dash one oh three eight U, moratorium in the crossword specific plan, MUC district. I will turn it over first to uh, Mr. Cook. Uh, so Mr. Cook, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez and members of the council. Um, I'll do a introduction of this item and then Mr. Remers will go over in a little more detail, some level of detail. But tonight's item really serves as a check-in and also to a really, a higher level policy process level discussion concerning the current moratorium status and the moratorium itself and the uses in the specific plan. So tonight's discussion is not meant to be uh, kinda picking and choosing certain things, but rather a really a broad policy level discussion. Um, and then, and those, that policy level discussion kinda centers on some key points and Mr. Remers will talk about some of those key high-level policy points as well. One, just as a kind of a reminder why we put this moratorium in place, the specific plan does contemplate and is in statute, uh, allowing for standalone commercial development. So if it's an existing use, an existing structure and how that may be framed, that's in place. Part of our concern was when we did hear about marketplaces in terms of the uses that we, what we didn't contemplate is somebody essentially lifting the roof of an existing building, putting in some subdividers and calling it a day. So, but at the same time, the city can't indefinitely prohibit the uses described into the moratorium or via the moratorium indefinitely. Now, marketplaces can be used and fit into mixed use developments. But again, as we, as we've pointed out prior, the specific plan did not fully consider public marketplace uses via them indoor or outdoor to be done in tandem with a couple things. One, minimum densities for housings or as a, a mixed use, having, how that surrounds and complements and is integrated into a mixed use project. And then the other idea is, and what we need, and which will lead to some more time we need, is the use of development agreements with these types of public marketplaces. Now, you'll remember that the specific plan did speak to public benefits that can be achieved and certain public amenities that we are looking for in terms of the specific plan. So those are two other components too. The other big one too is COVID nineteen. And we, and what it has done in the nature of this pandemic to what commercial and residential development looks like going forward. Some of it's pretty straightforward. Single-family homes are still being built, but how it is playing out in areas where mixed use is allowed, we don't really know how this really impacts the specific plan's goals and initiatives. And then lastly, um, recently, as you, you discussed in your last meeting, uh, the state is now requiring more, for lack of a term, density in terms of the housing units we're asking for. And staff, based on, you know, several years of work under the general plan and specific plan with the advisory council, uh, general plan advisory group and planning commission of the council, were really packed in the densities to the corridors. And that was one of the key aspects of how we were able to achieve the zoning that would allow for us to read, meet our, meet arena numbers. So it, understanding those components together, all of those uh, lead us to this kinda broader discussion so that we can come back with a more refined and precise ordinance later this year, where the development, development community can, uh, later next year, excuse me, where the development community can more easily understand a city's intention. So all these issues in their totality really lead us to ask the council to consider a very modest extension of the moratorium, which would expire in January of next year, to go an additional six months, which would end at around June seventh of next, of two thousand twenty-one. So uh, I leave that as an introduction and I turn it over to uh, Mr. Remers for uh, what I was now able to articulate as well.
Yes, thank you. Um, good evening, Mayor. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Great.
Yep.
Yeah.
So let's see, there we go. Uh, so just to remind you, back in twenty seventeen, uh, the council adopted what's known as the crossroad specific plan, which set a direction for um, the area around Rosemead Boulevard in Las Tunas. Um, then more recently, in January of this year, the city adopted a moratorium that lasts for a year. Um, not long after that, the city declared a state of emergency, and that's one of the things we wanted to discuss with you, is how that state of emergency has impacted um, both the specific plan and the moratorium. So the moratorium, to be clear, is on, um, is a prohibition on any public food markets and the subdivision of any parcel or commercial tenant space within the west side of the specific plan area, the MUC zone. So that's everything south of Las Tunas and west of Rosemead Boulevard, north of Broadway. Um, so that moratorium and the crossroad specific plan has been uh, affected by, just as about everything has, by the pandemic. Um, the city's finances have changed. Um, you can look at the city's collection of sales taxes and see that there's been changes there. Um, the whole economy has changed, um, and we've seen that, um, whole sectors of the economy um, have done okay with home improvement stores and grocery stores doing just fine, while other sectors of the economy have been hard hit. Um, the housing market currently is strong, um, but it's changing. There seems to be less demand for dense living, and we don't know at this point whether that demand is going to continue or if it's gonna come back again. Um, we've all been through social distancing requirements and that's hit certain businesses harder than other businesses. Um, we've seen additional commercial vacancies and it's possible we'll see a lot more commercial vacancies. Um, we've seen uses having to move outdoors in order to operate, um, and that's been okay for some types of businesses, but that's made some, some other businesses can't operate outdoors. And we've seen a um, dramatic effect on brick and mortar retail demand. Um, and so a lot of services have, or a lot of goods purchasing has moved to the internet. And so all of those are things that have affected perhaps the vision of the crossroad specific plan and this moratorium more specifically. Um, so what um, we wanted to do is to um, think about giving you more time to provide some direction on the moratorium and uh, think about what are some additional items you would like us to look at, some additional research, um, so that we can move forward when the moratorium um, ends. Um, another piece beyond just the, the pandemic that's going to affect um, your decision and the crossroad specific plan in general, is the upcoming housing element. Now, I, I know you had a um, very long presentation I gave to you a couple of weeks ago, um, so I'll try to be short, but for those who weren't there, um, the housing element um, has to be updated every eight years. That means we need to do ours next year in October and that process will begin shortly. But the housing element has to show that we have sufficient capacity to meet our housing demand as defined by arena allocation. And so the crossroad specific plan um, at complete buildout would have provided eighteen hundred units. Um, so that is a likely source we would go to in the housing element. We would expect that, that specific plan would provide a lot of the housing. Right now, our arena allocation number is two thousand one hundred eighty-two dwelling units. Um, so we have to perform within the housing element, uh, what's called a sites inventory, and we have to show the state very clearly what sites we think um, could be used to meet the house, to meet housing and where is their capacity to meet that housing. Um, the concern is, is a no-net loss provision in state law. And what that says is that the city has to continually provide sufficient inventory for housing. So for instance, if we um, if we designated the properties in the crossroad specific plan in our sites inventory and said, this is where we expect development to occur, occur, and if we end up approving um, uses on those sites that don't provide the same density that was expected in the site inventory, we have to do one of two things. We have to make a very clear finding that there is sufficient capacity elsewhere in the city, or the city, or we would have to upzone other parcels in the city to make up for that. One way that some cities deal with that, and actually we had it in our three code previously, was that we had a minimum density requirement and that was to make sure that you could meet the densities in your site inventory. So, one of the questions we'd like some feedback from the council would be, should we further consider that idea of a minimum density requirement? Should we do a little bit more research and bring you more, more information on that? Is that something you'd like us to look into? Under commercial subdivisions, we have done some research on that. Typically, we found that tenant space size minimums are around 800 to 1,000 square feet. There was one local agency nearby that had a requirement that you at least had to have one anchor tenant and that was defined as one tenant that made up 20% of the shopping center square footage. The benefit there is that if you have one big anchor tenant, that that would help to bring demand for those smaller tenants. We might also, given some of the large buildings in the Crossroads Specific Plan, we might also want to consider a minimum width and a minimum depth for certain tenant spaces. Because you wouldn't want to have a tenant space that is 10 feet wide and really, really long and be left with some horrible, rather unusable tenant space there, so. In regards to the public food market uses, public food markets, they generally consist of some sort of food orientation. So, that's grocery items or prepared foods or some sort of cafe space. Sometimes mixed in with that is retail sales of accessory goods. Some of the models are very experience-focused, so they're trying to get people to come because they offer a great experience. They might provide interesting architecture and pull that all together to drive that demand. They sometimes can provide recreational activities for people who are there and using this space. They tend to need a large consumer market. They bring that market in using that unique architecture or unique setting, creating a unique experience or having some hard-to-find products or a vast array of products. So, that's why they're successful. So, having design and amenities appear to help with the success of a marketplace project. So, if you have really good design, really good amenities, if it's designed well with good experience, then you probably will have a successful marketplace. And so, one of the questions we wanted to pose to the council tonight is, should this be a use that we should allow? And if that is something you'd like us to further explore, what type of process would you want us to use? The development agreement process is a process that would require council approval. It would offer the ability to negotiate some public benefits. But another option would be to just have a conditional use permit that is approved by planning commission, or you could have a new entitlement that goes to council and has some specific findings to make sure that the council's issues are addressed. So, in conclusion, we just wanted to highlight that, yeah, circumstances have changed dramatically since this moratorium was created. That includes both the pandemic and our arena allocation, which was much larger than expected. We've given you some update on the research on commercial subdivisions and on public markets. And our thinking is that you, we may need and you may want some additional time to gather additional information. So, you may want to extend this moratorium for another six months as the city manager mentioned, because you may want to see the result of the arena appeal that's going in. We won't see the result of that appeal until 2021. And then you may want to see where our sites inventory is headed. So, can we, would it be possible to pick up sufficient capacity outside of the Crossroads Specific Plan, or will the Crossroads Specific Plan really need to be the, the main focus? So, you may want to put this decision, the moratorium and the decision with that often for another six months, given those items. So, the focus tonight in terms of the recommendation is to give us any additional information that you want us to research and then to give us direction on how we should move forward. Tonight, we're recommending that we come back, that we request an extension of another six months for the moratorium. With that, I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Remers. Why don't we start with Mayor Protem, you with any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I guess my main question is really, I agree, the pandemic and the impact on retail really changed the rules, rules of the game here and it's still not being finalized. But, but I'm just curious, Mr. Remer, have, after we have put in the moratorium, have we received any inquiries or any feedback from either developers or landowners with regards to the moratorium? And also, if they have said anything about, in general, the extending of the moratorium would do to them?
A few months ago, the, the people who owned, currently owned the lease for the Kmart facility, for instance, did start to really, what's the term, promote or market the site, the Kmart site. It was after that that we start, we got two specific, well, actually three or four specific questions about the site and what could be done with it. Two of those questions were affected by the moratorium because they would have had some sort of public food market component. And then the other questions were from uses that were not allowed under the specific plan anyway, so they wouldn't be able to move forward. Beyond that, we did notify the property owners and the own, the person who owns, the group that owns the lease for the Kmart Center about this meeting and I haven't received any communication from any of those parties.
Okay. Mr. Mayor Protem, I just want to add one, and it's a bit of clarification that I think is important for the council to understand, in the context of a moratorium and in the context of some long-range planning. With respect to Kmart's site, as the council knows, the parent company is, is going through a dissolution. That site was deemed to be valuable enough that it was subleased. So, you have the property owner, you have the dissolving corporation trying to get assets to pay off its creditors as best it can, and you have a group that thought it was worth subleasing that site, giving some money to the dissolving corporation because they thought they could make money on the site. So, we're not talking about a new ownership group that's ready to come in and put in substantial amounts of, of capital to really turn the site over into something that the council had originally envisioned in adopting the plan. That was one of the concerns, to be quite frank, that you could wind up with 10 years or more of this sublease, now leasing out spaces without creating an experience for either the tenants or your public that was what was envisioned. And so, when we wanted to put the brakes on and sought the moratorium be adopted in the first place, that was part of it. Because we thought it was important that you as a council rethink the vision rather than having potentially the, the key corner space tied up with what would be a leasing group that is not really a long, long-term, 3-40-year horizon thought process. I, I hope that helps a little bit. Yes, there is interest, but that interest may be in conflict with what your original vision was.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscara, any questions?
I'm just wondering if we did do another extension, is there enough of an organized group there that would consider coming after us legally? Or suing us for, because they can't use the property?
You know, sir, when, when you first adopted the moratorium, we, we looked at that pretty cautiously and there are a number of uses that are allowed. What we wanted to disallow was, as, as Mr. Remer said, the, the subdivision of existing spaces, which, again, something where there's not a lot of capital being put into the site, we're just chopping up a space and making less valuable retail from a, a long-term perspective, although certainly the people make money right now. And then the public market, which is kind of doing the same thing without actually chopping up the building. It's, it's more opening up the building and then allowing many things to happen inside. So, there are plenty of things that can be done on the site. We are not in any way restraining the economic use of the site. We're just restraining essentially some economic use that would have some short-term benefits for the owners, but really have some long-term detriment for the property in general because it's, they're in some ways, they're, they're short-sighted uses. So, is there a group that can do that? Absolutely, yes, yes, that it could happen. Are we particularly concerned that a challenge would be successful? Not particularly at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist, any questions?
Greg, what, what use besides a big box store could potentially go in there now? If we did an extension of the moratorium?
Sure, well, if you did not extend the moratorium?
Yes. No, if we extended the moratorium for six months, what could possibly go in there? Could a market go in there?
You know, honestly, somebody could submit a, an application tomorrow to do a large-scale mixed-use project and we'd be happy to take it. An application to, you know, again, drop the Kmart building to the floor and build a new building that is consistent with the specific plan and your staff would be happy to take that and begin processing. The concern is that the existing buildings will be locked in for a longer period of time and you won't get the benefits of the specific plan as it was presented to you and as, as you directed it be modified and then as you adopted it. That's, that was kind of where we were last January and I think we're, what Mr. Remers is saying is, given COVID and, and the restrictions on us all, you know, he's interested in getting some direction as to whether you want him to study it some more or, you know, maybe come back with, with changes more immediately.
During that time, it's okay for the city, for our, for Mr. Remers to go out and see if there's any interest in someone doing a mixed-use project? Is there any constraints what the city has to not reach out to people?
I need to defer to Mr. Remers and Mr. Cook on that.
No, there's, there's nothing from a land use perspective that would preclude us from reaching out to developers. The difficulty would really be that the, the person who, or the group that currently owns the lease now would have to be willing to sell the lease.
Okay. Thank you. That, that clears it up in my head. Thank you, Greg.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mann, any questions?
Yes, thank you. Kind of following up on Councilmember Sternquist's question, I, I guess, if, if it were to be subdivided, let's say the moratorium was lifted and under, under the current codes and ordinances that apply, how small can that lot be subdivided? Do we know?
I, I'm sorry, you, you, my connection broke out just at the end there, Councilmember.
Okay. No, no problem. My basic question is, if the moratorium was lifted and they proposed to subdivide the Kmart space, how small can it get?
Well, that, there's nothing in the specific plan that has a limitation on the minimum size. That's one of our concerns.
I see. And for a commercial lot, does a subdivision or a hypothetical subdivision, could it also entail splitting up the portion of the lot that includes the parking area?
Yeah, it, it's possible that, that that could be split.
And, but if, if they were to do something like that, would then the specific plan guidelines kick in and they have to follow that?
Yes, the specific plan can set minimum lot sizes, minimum street frontage requirements, so forth.
And as our current, I don't remember, but does our current Crossroads Specific Plan outline those?
No, it doesn't.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right, that, that was, that was kind of my, my main question. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Other than the Kmart portion, is there, are there any other current vacancies in that, that whole area?
Not currently that I'm aware of, but I always have a concern about an office supply store leaving.
Yeah, so, okay. And what's the length of the lease, do we know, on the Kmart?
I believe it's around 15 years.
15.
Yeah, I was, I, I obviously don't have it in front of me, but as I recall their letter from last January, February timeframe, 15 rings in my head as well.
And that leads me to my last question and I don't know whether that will be addressed in the future recommendations, but it always has been a, a challenge for us with that area regarding the multiple, the multiple amount of owners that we have to deal with. Is that, is that a concern of staff or can you speak to that at all or has that come into any of the recommendations?
You know, as, as, as expressed with, I think, a bit of frustration and challenge, you know, in a perfect world, the specific plan would have a master developer and one entity that we're dealing with. And we've been challenged. So, yes, it, it is a challenge and we've had, we've had, we have really great property owners and Mr. Remers has done a great job of communicating with them and working with them through this, but in terms of them talking about the economic interests and other components of that, that it does, it makes it extremely challenging. We've done our best and that's why we set the template and the framework with a specific plan and with, and that's why, you know, but no specific plan is going to be perfect and that's why we, and that's why, you know, in, no plan is perfect in the sense of contemplating all of the issues that would play out from a development standpoint. So, again, the specific plan built this general framework, built the general and provided the general econo, excuse me, environmental clearances for a development to happen, but it's, it's, it's tough.
Well, it's just that it appears to me that, you know, we're being asked to come up with a vision and, and I think we're all on the, we'd love to do that, but there are certainly these challenges before us that maybe normally would not be in such a development area because of the multiple owners. It seems that we've, we've had to deal with it obviously for a long, long time and it doesn't seem to be going away anytime soon. Okay, so, I'm going to go ahead and open up public comment and I'm going to ask our city clerk if we, first of all, if we have any public comment emails on this matter.
Mayor, there are no email public comments. We do have a public.
I believe we have a speaker or someone on the line who would like to speak to this matter. So, if you were, those of you who are listening in, this would be the time. Please tell us your name and then you can go ahead and speak.
Hi, my name is Albert Cho from BH Properties. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I represent BH Properties for the Kmart site. The Kmart site, you know, you guys were discussing that and I could probably fill you in. I had come to the meeting back in February to discuss about the site and it's obviously owned by the Grazziato Investment Group and then BH Properties were the sublease that purchased the site or the. that purchased the site or the master lease. And I just want to kind of explain to you where we stand. From last meeting, we were marketing it. And recently, we have signed, I guess, a self-sublease to a GW supermarket. And if you're not aware, they're a large Asian supermarket, probably about 19 stores throughout the nation. They're pretty reputable. I think they have a couple in Rosemead, one in Rosemead and another local in Rowan Heights. And so we have recently done a deal based on an 18-year term. And so that kind of addresses one of the questions that was brought up. How long of a lease term is remaining? It's about 18 years. And so that's the length of term that we've written into agreement as of about a month ago. And so we're in the process of drafting some design and layout. And on this project, I know one of the council member has brought up a concern of purchasing it and the likelihood of investing in the site to really make it a good improvement. And just to kind of put things in perspective, we're expected to spend about $10 million. We'll be contributing about $2 million to the project. And then the prospect GW supermarket is planning on putting about $8 million into the project site as well. I think right now, the only thing that's kind of holding up from moving forward is just kind of getting some feedback from the city planning department in terms of the design and what we like to do to improve the site. And one of the concerns that was kind of, I guess, in the gray area is really definition of public market. Because it is a single user, but we wanted to kind of get some idea in terms of a food court, if that's going to be designated or defined as a public market. And in our understanding, based on the definition, we thought it wouldn't be under that. But then, you know, that seems to be some gray area. So we'd like to get some clarification on that. Yeah, I mean, I understand with the whole pandemic and everything has really changed the vision or impacted where, you know, what the initial vision was. But, you know, with the recent pandemic, I think the grocery store, you know, for the area would be a great benefit to the public. You know, when initially started, I mean, obviously, there was a shortage and a lot of the food and things like that. So, you know, I think, like, I think someone had commented during these times, you know, I think grocery is or one of the users that's able to do really well. Obviously, will benefit the city's revenue from the sales revenue and so forth. So I think there's definitely a great positive. And I hope that, you know, what's, you know, in place now, that the city will be supportive in being able to kind of work with us to hopefully make this happen.
Again, thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. Is there anyone else on the line who wishes to speak at this time? Hearing none, I will go ahead and close public comments, and we'll go ahead and.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
May I ask a question of the speaker?
Sure, go ahead.
Is there a, is that Mr. Cho? I didn't catch your last name.
Last name Cho.
Mr. Cho, yeah. Is that timeframe when this market is planned to be coming on board?
So we've already gone into an agreement as about a month ago. So right now, it's just kind of doing our due diligence in terms of, you know, doing the layout, working with the architect. And so right now, I think just the design and layout is kind of like what's on hold right now. We've been communicating with Scott, and then there were some few questions that he's been communicating with the architect. So we're just, this is kind of like where we're at, just the initial stage.
Is this the supermarket near the intersection of Rosemeat Boulevard and Valley?
Yes, that's one of them.
That's one of them. With that, is the vision to make this somewhere to that GW supermarket in Rosemeat?
Yes, I think the one in the Rosemeat Valley is one of their smaller sites. I think that is about 30,000 square feet. They do want to make this the center, the main hub, you know, and really kind of make it. So I guess that's kind of one of the aspects. It's about, you know, close to, little under 90,000 square feet. And they're, you know, they're hoping that they could kind of develop some kind of like a food concept, you know, within the space. But again, when the, I guess it kind of hinges upon whether the city views that as a public market or not. So they had some ideas on it, but again, we're kind of handcuffed to based on how the city determines that under design. But I think the 30,000, I don't think it has food court or anything. I think it's a pure grocery store because it is a smaller site. So this is almost more than double, probably triple than what's at the Valley site.
So Mr. Cho, how would the moratorium impact you if we were to approve that tonight?
So if the moratorium is in place, I think there's two things that prevent it. One is the subdivision and the subdivision and then the public market. So the subdivision comes into play if they were to try to, you know, if you've seen like 99 Ranch or go to those stores, sometimes they have like smaller retail, you know, like little shops that they may consider adding. And then the other thing, that may impact the subdivision. Now, it won't be like those large walls. They're not going to do like, you know, so it's just like a open area, maybe like five or six kind of smaller options. So that may be impacted with the moratorium. And then the second thing is the food court. So we don't think it's a public market, but if the city or the planning department defines that, then that would be the second way it could potentially impact. So if those things are in play, then, I mean, and it kind of puts us in a position where it would just be a single grocer, right? And just have a large space and utilize it as storage. But obviously, ideally, we would like to have, you know, them to have that flexibility, be able to have that kind of similar type of layout, like with other Asian markets and 99 Ranch as an example, to develop, which I think will be more efficient and I think better in terms of the use.
So, councilmembers, this is Greg. You certainly have heard the kind of vision of the people in control of this property right now. My concern is if we talk too much more with this party, we could get into a position where if a decision has to be made by the council on an application at some point down the line, it will have been talked about tonight without actually being on your agenda. So you've got some general ideas from them, but I'd like to kind of not go down too many more specifics at this point in case this does have to come back to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Murphy. I wasn't going to add any more questions.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Okay, with that said, I'm going to close public comment. And we will now start with council comments. Councilmember Mann?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Cho. There's, I guess, there's a lot to process to us. I appreciate the comprehensiveness of the staff report and presentation. But I think what makes it challenging from my perspective is that the questions being asked are extremely open-ended. I think there's so many different directions that we can go with this that the first thing I'll say is, I think we need more time. And if more time means extending the moratorium, then I would be in favor of that. What I asked, I have a ton of questions on this. I'm not going to read them all out here, but maybe I have them for staff to consider later. But for example, one of the things from a bigger picture standpoint that I think is going to clash is, are we actually being asked to revise the crossroads specific plan? And to me, that's something that's not going to take a single or even two council meetings. The specific plan was part of the general plan update that took multiple years, a lot of community input, a lot of community stakeholders to develop what is right now. And to kind of change it, at least I get a sense that whatever we do now is ending, is inevitably going to amend it in some way due to the extenuating circumstances of COVID-19 and how that impacts the whole development industry and the business side. So I think we need more time to really vet through some of these questions, such as this issue of a public market space. I think we should be asking ourselves, why wasn't that used allowed during the development of the crossroads? Why wasn't that brought up? Could it have been us, the community collectively, did not envision that as being part of the future? I think that's a really key value question we need to ask. But if we set aside the value and kind of dig down to the pragmatic side of things, I don't know if staff can answer this or are we ever going to be able to answer this is, you know, what is really the future of sites like these? You know, like councilmember was asked earlier, what can we expect to move in, right? Now, granted, Mr. Cho, who represents the property, has indicated what their vision is and that markets have shown to have performed well during the pandemic. I would counter that by saying, I think that's a short-sighted vision of site. And I think that is in stark contrast with what the crossroads the long-term vision, you know, 10, 20, 30 years down the line. So as a council, do we say, do we? I see it as, do we take the shortcut, the easy route, which is, you know, we take what's in front of us? If we get tied into an 18-year, do we even have a choice, you know? Or do we stick to what brought of time, money, and effort to embed it? And say, this is the vision that we're going to amend it? I think we need a lot more consideration as to how we amend it beyond, you know, one, two meetings. So I think what I would ask, if we're providing directions to staff, I'd really want to know, well, a couple of things. From a planning standpoint, how is it possible to integrate a public food market into the existing crossroads specific plan? What type of planning standards would come into play? How would those changes affect issues like our RENA numbers? So let's say hypothetically, we allow a public food market use to occur, and presumably, it only occurs within that portion of the giant park that that is Kmart site. How much of the RENA numbers does that take away? I think we need to know that. And a public market operate without subdividing? I don't know. Why the, Mr. Cho is claiming that the subdivision is necessary to make certain things work. Part of me believes that that's not true, but I don't know. I don't want to, you know, accuse someone of something wrong when I might be wrong. So I think we need clarity about how exactly the subdivision process is with everything else. Yeah, and I think that's really the key thing. Those questions I brought up is a lot more specific. But I really think we need to start by looking at, what do we truly want as our, if we're modifying it? Are we just going to, like, what's that plan? I don't see that. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
I don't have any questions. Just I think it would be a good idea if staff hears about some of these things. We at least kind of get a heads-up that something might be coming down the pipeline. But that's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Viscara?
No, I think I'll reserve comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem, you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I also agree with a lot of things that have been said by Councilmember Mann and Councilmember Sternquist. Yeah, it'd be nice to know what's been going on with the site instead of just looking at the moratorium tonight. I didn't know what has been going on with, well, the conversation that we, that has been taking place. So I was, although I'm prepared tonight to hear that an agreement has been signed. But in regards of that, I do agree with staff's recommendation that in the face of COVID, in the face of the changing marketplace, because the economy, the retail economy definitely has changed in the last few months and definitely is heading towards a different place. And it's still changing. So I appreciate that staff is suggesting that, even though the crossroads specific plan is pretty new, three years old, but what's been happening in the last couple, three, well, not three to six months, and it's sufficient to, taking a second look at at least some of the provisions of that plan. I'll be supportive of asking staff to come back with more of a recommendation on some of the very issues that we suggest. And maybe even be able to address some of the other, maybe other provisions in the specific plan that, you know, that need to be updated as a result of anything that happened in the last couple, three years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all.
Thank you. I too share some concern hearing for the first time tonight that basically the main part of that area, or at least a large part of that area, has, the LSC has entered into an agreement, apparently, with someone to develop that and has had a conversation with staff. To what extent, obviously, we don't know. But that concerns me a little bit to hear about that, especially when we're talking about this moratorium. I do agree, however, that, given the nature of the discussion tonight, that there are some things that we still need to know. We still need to find out, especially the RENA numbers, you know, what type of density requirements that we're going to take a look at. And obviously, we still have this open so-called public food market issue that wasn't really quite clear to me after hearing from Mr. Cho that whether it does or it does not, it sounds to me like it could, but depending on what we approve, it may not. So that's a little bit confusing to me. But at any rate, I think, given all that together, I think we need to have staff return with an extension, at least for the time being, to allow for additional analysis of what has been going on and also to provide perhaps some other options that we may explore, including taking a look at the crossroads specific plan specifically. So with that said, I will go ahead and entertain a motion at this time. Anybody who would like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll try to make a motion here.
Um, I moved it, uh, we, we direct staff to come back with a formal recommendation on any land use changes, um, to the, uh, crossroad specific plan and any, and also return with a formal request for extension of the present moratorium to allow for additional analysis of options.
Okay. We do have a second. Um, I will go ahead and ask the Madam Clerk to please take roll call.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember, uh, Sternquist?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Yeah.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes.
I, I think we might have to, in, we might have to entertain some new policies that in addition to saying verbally, yes, we might have to go to the, to the thumbs up or the thumbs down, huh? Uh, maybe that'll work better, huh? Okay. All right. So, uh, that will be the order. So now we will now move on to item B, grant fund opportunities. And, uh, we will hear a presentation on potential grant funding resources. Mr. City Manager, it's all yours.
Well, um, I guess with this item today, um, with us in the line is Megan Lalo. She is with, um, Avant Garde, who has assisted the city with many grants, including Rosy Boulevard, and most recently with Primrose Park as well. Uh, we'll briefly go over just a summary. One of the things the council has asked us to do is to continue continuously look at grant opportunities throughout and see some opportunities that we can continue to look for. Uh, so with that, uh, Megan will just go briefly over, uh, what she's monitoring and what we are looking forward into in the next few months. So Megan?
Yes, thank you. Um, as Brian mentioned, I am, my name is Megan Lanew. I am the Grants Manager at Avant Garde, and I will be the primary grant writer for Temple City. Um, I did help assist the city last summer with preparing the successful application for the Primrose Park project. And tonight I'll be going through a more formalized list or matrix of the potential grant opportunities, which we will continue to track and update for the city as needed. Um, so on this slide, we can see that a majority of the money is focused on multimodal transportation, um, as well as projects that focus on climate change, such as reducing gas emissions, um, improving public health. Um, another big item is parks and open space with the adoption of Prop 68. That's been a huge funding source for a lot of grant programs, including recreational programs for youth. Um, and then HCD also has a lot of funding available for affordable housing and infill infrastructure projects. So some items worth noting is that a lot of grant programs do require, uh, match funds, and it, they can range from 10% to 50%. Um, it just depends on the program. Another item is a lot of these programs are needs-based. Um, last year, when we worked on the statewide park program application, um, the needs were determined by median household income and park acreage per 1,000 people. Um, so they're specific to each program. For instance, active transportation program focuses on disadvantaged communities. Um, and they change each program and part of our process is, you know, reviewing the guidelines, seeing what the eligibility thresholds are, and, um, confirming whether or not the city or the project would qualify for that. So in the following slides, there's a list of about 30, um, grant opportunities that we've pulled together. But these five are the ones that really stood out, um, during our research. Um, the first is the Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant, which, um, will have a call for projects released in November and applications will be due in January. I believe, um, well, we'll, we'll get more into that, uh, in a couple of minutes. Um, the second one is the Urban Greening Grant Program. Um, when speaking with staff, we had discussed the possibility of going after this funding source for the Eat and Wash Multi-Use Trail Project, um, possibly providing some enhancements to that project to, um, make it a little more inviting for people to use. Another option is, uh, possibly upgrading the parking lot paseos behind the businesses along Las Tunes Drive. And the third grant program that we called out is the Statewide Park Program. Um, staff had mentioned wanting to renovate Live Oak Park, and we did look into the competitiveness for that project. Um, while Live Oak Park does qualify, um, and it is eligible to participate, it may not score as competitively as Primrose Park did because of the high, uh, median household income and the higher-end, uh, parks per 1,000 people ratio. So while it's eligible, it might not be the most, uh, competitive. So one thing to consider is, are there any potential sites for new park development? Because that's, um, this funding source really prefers new park development as opposed to expansion or renovation. Um, the fourth one that caught our eye was the Youth Community Access Grant. Um, and we were considering reaching out to the youth committee and coordinating with them to develop, um, some programs for this, uh, grant. And then finally is the Cal Home Grant, which is currently out with a due date of October 29th. Um, and the Cal Home Grant focuses on programs very similar to home and such as housing rehab, um, new housing development, and then also down payment assistance for first-time homebuyer programs. Okay, so now we can start going through the list. Um, you'll notice on the left side of the list, um, I do point out some things to consider. And then, uh, staff notes are provided on the right side. Excuse me. I did touch on this one earlier, the Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant. Um, in speaking with staff, we considered possibly, um, I de, uh, applying for funding to develop a safe route to school plan to identify safe route to school infrastructure that's currently in need of improvement. Um, the application deadline has been updated to January 2021. Um, and I think moving forward, we can work with the city's, um, engineering consultant, TransTech, to determine, uh, additional eligible projects. Um, and we are asking that you consider whether or not, um, the city would like to proceed with applying for this current cycle, which would have a deadline of January 20, uh, 21, not November 2020. Um, the second program on this list is the Urban Greening, which, uh, we had mentioned before with the Eat and Wash and Las Tunes, uh, Drive projects. Um, this grant focuses on, uh, GHG emission reductions. Um, they prefer green streets and alleyways, any type of greening project. They're really for the planting of trees, um, and then strategically planting those trees so that they, uh, shade buildings and in turn reduce energy use. Um, this program is not currently out yet, um, but it is cyclical. So if the city would like to, um, proceed during the next round, we can definitely work to develop some strong projects for this one. Hmm, uh, next one is the Highway Safety Improvement Program, which is focused on, um, transportation-related projects that will, uh, make roads safer and primarily for pedestrians and bicyclists, but also for motorists. Um, this program is currently ongoing. They just extended the deadline to November 2nd. Uh, but we had planned on working with TransTech again to determine eligible projects for the next round, which will most likely take place in fall or summer and fall of 2022. Um, this one does usually come around every other year instead of every year. Um, the next one on this page is the Rubberized Pavement Grant Program, which is strictly funding just for rubberized asphalt concrete or, um, yes, rubberized asphalt concrete. Um, and again, this one was just due this month, but this one does come around every year. So, uh, we will be working with TransTech to determine some, uh, road and pavement projects within the next 18 months that are on, currently on, uh, on the agenda to get done. We can work with them, uh, to get some funding for the, uh, rubberized asphalt. The next one is the Local Partnership Program, which is a very general transportation-related, um, program. It focuses on bicyclists, pedestrians, um, also just reg, uh, you know, regular road improvements, uh, pavement improvements, road maintenance and rehab. Um, this program was just due this past summer, so we do not know yet when the next cycle will be, but we will keep our eyes, um, open and work with TransTech again to determine some eligible projects. Uh, the second item on this page is the Local Streets and Roads Program, which is actually an annual allocation that the city receives. Um, and SB1 funds, sorry, this program is funded through SB1. And the city has informed us that they have already programmed, um, programmed this allocation so far. Uh, I mentioned earlier the Active Transportation Program, which was just, uh, due this past month in September for Cycle 5. Um, this program does come around every other year, so it won't be back again until 2022 for, uh, Cycle 6. But as I mentioned earlier, there are disadvantaged community requirements. So this one, we would really have to work closely with TransTech to find a project that met those eligibility requirements. Um, this program does not require a match. However, leverage funds are encouraged and usually worth, um, points towards the total score. This program is highly competitive, um, but it's a really great funding source, solely focused on pedestrian and bicyclist, uh, projects. The second item on this page is the, um, Federal Section 5310 Program, uh, enhanced mobility for seniors or, uh, persons with disabilities. This program is sponsored by Metro, and they are federal funds, but, um, Metro is the recipient of these federal funds, and then the awardees would be the subrecipients. Uh, this program focuses on actual transit purchases, whether they be vans or buses, um, which will serve seniors or persons with disabilities. Um, they can be used for dial-a-ride or any other services that the city offers. Um, I believe when speaking with staff, they did ask us to look into, um, this program's eligibility for the potential of, um, new bus stops or fixing up the city's existing bus stop. So we will check in, uh, once this new, once the new round is announced, we'll, we'll, we'll follow up on that. Uh, first item on this page is Proposition 68, which is a per capita allocation that the city receives. Um, this ends park and open space projects. Um, and I believe the funds have already been allocated for this. But following that is the Statewide Park Program, which I had mentioned earlier. Um, this is the program which funded Primrose Park. Um, we did look into Live Oak Park's competitiveness and found that it may not fare too well against other projects, but if the city has any other, um, potential space for new development of parks, that would be a, uh, a great pursuit. Um, and this round four is currently going on with an application due date of December 14th. Um, this, uh, sorry, this program does require extensive community outreach. So if the city does want to, uh, apply this round, we would have to get started as quickly as possible so we can get the, um, outreach conducted. And then also, this is the last round. There's $395 million available, and there will not be a round five. So this is kind of a last chance for this program using Prop 68, uh, funding. Item is the Urban Flood Protection Program. Um, this program focuses on addressing flooding in urbanized areas. So you can use it for stormwater capture and reuse projects or restoring urban streams. Um, and also increasing permeable surfaces to reduce flooding. Uh, right now, there is not an open call for projects, but we will, um, track this one and also work with TransTech to determine, um, eligible projects. The second item on this page is the Land and Water Conservation Fund. This program is very similar to the Statewide Park Program in that it funds, um, park and open space projects. Um, we anticipate the next round being due in February 2022, as it just, um, I think its last round was this past summer. Um, so we could check in on the eligibility thresholds for this program and see if it would be a better fit for Live Oak Park or, um, possibly reconstructing the community center at Live Oak Park. Next item is the Recreational Trails and Greenways. Um, this program, we were also considering for the Eat and Wash Multi-Use Trail. Um, this program focuses on development and rehab of trails or trailside. I believe staff had asked us or, uh, to look into determine if, um, sorry, just to backtrack a little bit, uh, I know that the city's working with the county on this project, and we are going to look into the potential of the county possibly being able to use the funds. Uh, and we will do that. Um, right now, there isn't a current round going on, but again, we'll, we'll track this one for the next time. Uh, second item on this page is the Youth Community Access Grant. Um, this program did just occur, uh, with the due date of, in September, but we believe that it will come back around next year. Um, this program focuses on programming activities such as cultural festivals and outreach events for youth. Um, also youth-led outdoor skills workshops, outdoor experiences. Uh, you can also use it to acquire vehicles that will transport youth to, um, activities and cultural resources. Uh, as mentioned earlier, we would like to reach out to Uh, as mentioned earlier, we would like to reach out to the youth community and develop potential programs and projects for the next round of this funding source. This is the Youth and Job Training, sorry, Youth and Veteran Job Training and Placement Program, which is put on by the county. Um, this program did occur in twenty-twenty, but unfortunately, because of the pandemic, they realized that agencies would be unable to conduct their programs in the way that they had proposed in their applications. So they unfortunately canceled all of the applications that were received and would are not going to be awarding any funding for this past year. They're going to be putting on a new round in twenty-twenty-one. So everyone can apply again. Um, but this one focuses on uh programs for the youth, such as um if there's recreational uh opportunities or trade opportunities. Um, this program does primarily focus on getting youth into the recreational field as their career, um which I think is really great. I know we assisted a city with um applying to develop a recreational leader program and then also um an aquatics instructor program. Uh, items on this page include the California Museum Grant Program, uh which focuses on curriculum development, marketing, staff training, uh replacement of equipment, installation of exhibits. Um, when speaking with staff, they had mentioned uh looking into and determining if the Historical Society or the Women's Club could be potential um eligible projects. Um, program was just due in September. We did just uh miss the cycle, but we will look into it further for the next cycle. Uh, getting into our housing programs now, uh the local early action planning or LEAP Grant Program um is due January thirty-first. Um, this program supports the preparation and adoption of planning documents um in order to accelerate housing production. Um, I know earlier during the meeting, during our council meeting, um we were talking about hitting those RENA figures. This grant would help assist that. Um, but I do believe that funding has already been received for this program for their uh for the housing element update. Infill Infrastructure Grant. This is a really great grant to um develop new construction, rehabilitation, and acquisition of infrastructure that would support a high-density, affordable, mixed-income housing. Um, projects can include parks or open space, uh transit linkages, streetscape improvements, water and sewer and utility improvements, um and then also pedestrian or bicyclist improvements. Um, this program is expected to be released uh this month with applications due in February. Um, when speaking with staff, we said that we would consider this program when affordable housing projects are proposed to the city. I believe right now there aren't too many on, on the horizon. Um Last one on this page is the Kelhome Grant Program, which I mentioned earlier. Um This program funds site acquisition, rehab, um down payment assistance, homebuyer counseling, and I believe staff was interested in possibly going after it for either this cycle, which would be a really tight deadline next week, um or next cycle for possibly down payment uh assistance for first, for the first-time homebuyer's program. What is the Local Housing Trust Fund Program, which uh will provide loans to cover predevelopment, acquisition, construction, or rehab of rental projects for low-income people or um homeo- homeownership projects for low-income residents. This program is expected to be released in April twenty-one with applications due in twenty-twenty-one. So if the city is interested, we could really get a, a head start on preparing some great projects for this. Um, possibly subsidizing new ADUs and JADUs for the first-time homebuyer program. But please note that there is an eligibility requirement that applicants must be a city that has created, funded, or operated an existing uh local housing trust fund uh and create, or that has created and funded a new local housing trust fund. So um we can speak with staff and see if that eligibility requirement is met by the city and then go from there. I believe these are our last two. Um, the Food Waste Prevention and Rescue Grant Program and the Organics Grant Program. Um These programs have not been released for this year, but we will keep them on our list for the next cycle that's released. They focus on food waste prevention projects that prevent food waste from being gen- uh generated. Um, there's also food rescue projects um that result in edible food being rescued and distributed to people. Um, funding can be used for the construction, renovation, or expansion of facilities that increase composting or digestion of organics into compost. Um, also the pre-processing of organics um or projects that result in an increase in tons of green or food materials diverted from landfills.
Thanks a lot, Megan. Appreciate all, all of your work. And as you can see from council, uh Megan's been super successful with us uh with our grants that we've re- received so far, demonstrated with Primrose and pretty exhaustive. So we'll come back with also, the next report we'll come back with as well is going through this and talking about some of those that you've uh uh that we have applied for, or we, we, we would be coming back to council with some of those. If over the next uh week or two, you see something that's there that it piques your interest, we can also bring it back at the next council meeting just so to, to get through the process of potentially applying for some of those. But Alvin Gar's been a really essential partner with us, and I appreciate all, all, all her work. This is, represents all Megan's work before. So thank you, Megan.
Mayor?
Yes. Uh, why don't we go, are you, is that, hold on, do we, is that conclude the report, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much for that report. Why don't we go ahead and start with some questions? Councilmember Sternquist, go ahead.
Uh, just a question. One of the grants was um to possibly look at a new park. I know that some time ago, we talked about what we possibly might do with the um old chamber site. Is, is that a thought? Is that something that the council would think about doing since it's December, I think is the deadline to apply for something?
Would that, you, you could. Um, it would be extremely uh compressed timeline to be able to do that. Um, also to, because of the cycle, that, that is the, that is the same grouping of grants that we received the Primrose Grant for. It's highly unlikely that we would receive a second grant for a project because they're trying their best to disperse those throughout the state. But um if, if, if there, if the council, there, and there's a broader planning process that needs to take place with that too. So um we could, we can always try to come back, but it would be an extremely compressed timeline in which to do that.
Brian, is, is that on an upcoming agenda soon, discussion of that parcel?
Not that I had it planned for, but I can, we can bring something back.
Uh, I'd appreciate having that discussion. I, I recall that we were hoping that you know, I, I know the pandemic hit and what have you, but I, I don't want us to forget that we have a a parcel of land there that we can possibly do something with. So I would like to keep that in, you know, on our minds and actively look at that.
Okay, will do.
Although, aren't our, our hands tied to a certain extent because of the uh lease to the county for the library?
Yeah, that, that, that lease terminates in July of next year, so.
Right, and I think the decision had been that we wouldn't wait till then to start discussing it, but that it would be along the process so that come next July, we'd have an idea of where, what we're going to do there.
Sounds good. Uh, councilmember Mann, any questions?
Uh, no questions, thank you.
Councilmember Viscara, any questions?
Other selection of the, the grants we go after takes place.
Well, first, we tried to align, look at, look at the projects we have that the council's authorized or initiatives that the council has, has given us direction on and try to align those. And then some of them are just very basic, you know, if they're infrastructure-related, things we know we're doing on a day-to-day, month-to-month or longer-term basis, then, then we'll go after that. For example, um, one we do, um we're just finishing Las Tunes right now. We do, we went for some grant funding for uh recycled pavement that we would use and maybe some on some of the collector's streets, maybe some of the uh residential streets as well. So what, we'll, we'll try, we try to defy or identify what's been council-approved initiatives and programs, and then what is kind of the day-to-day operational stuff that fits in to those types of grant opportunities.
Because I was thinking, you know, a, a lot of those, of, of those grants, I'm sure are viable. And uh, I was wondering how they got, so which ones will get selected and which ones won't? I'm sure that there are limits put out by your, your, your staffing or lack of and, and things like that, but I don't know. I'm sure we'll just have to let some go and, and go ahead and identify some others, right?
Yeah, just like we did with Primrose Park.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Potemiu, any questions?
Uh, no questions. I like the suggestions that uh staff have provided in the uh, in this staff report.
Okay, thank you. And I have no questions at this time, so I'm going to open up to public uh comments. I'll ask the city clerk if there are any, all the comment emails on this matter.
Mayor, there are no email public comments.
Okay, do we have anybody on the line?
We do not have any callers.
Okay, so I will go ahead and close public comment. Uh, any final council comments? Uh, we'll begin with uh councilmember Mann.
Uh, no, uh, just uh quickly, I appreciate the compilation of this. I, I think it's nice to see it all in one place to know that there are a lot of opportunities out there. Uh, I, I also appreciate the one part of the table that shows the feasibility from a one to five. Uh, that kind of at least gives me an idea of um what's more, what's more possible within the sphere of uh what we can do with, with uh, with those monies. Um, the ones that jump out at me are, I think the, the pavement stuff that Mr. Cook has mentioned. Um I saw an interesting one about the, with, that deals with our youth committee or potentially could deal with them. Um I think any, anything we could do to improve green space and enhance our parks is, we should always look at. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Um, councilmember Sternquist, any final comments?
No, just thank you for the report.
Thank, thank you. Councilmember Viscara, final comments?
Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Potemiu?
Uh, Ms. Mayor, nothing further. Just thank you, the staff for bringing this to, to our attention and appreciate the analysis uh on what is feasible.
Hey, thank you. And I, I completely agree with my colleagues. I think the matrix uh helped out a lot. Uh certainly uh um identifies those things that not only are out there, but uh also within our uh, our grasp, I guess you could say. And, and there's some good ideas out there. So um is this a receive-and-file uh matter then? Okay, so why don't we go ahead and uh have a motion?
I'll move that we receive and file the report.
Thank you.
I'll say.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Uh, madam clerk, if you could please take roll call.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Potemiu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much for that presentation. Um, we will now move to item eleven, update from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, and members of the council. I'll be brief. First, I'd like to thank and appreciate the patience of the residents and businesses along Las Tunes. Um, they've been extremely patient with us as we've been repaving Las Tunes, so thank you to them. Also, thank you to TransTech as well uh doing great project management and will hopefully uh pavement should be completed hopefully by the end of the week and striping shortly thereafter to allow the pavement to cure. So thank you for everyone's patience as we uh, as we rehabilitate Las Tunes. Um, one other thing too is to know, even though uh City Hall has modified hours in the sense of our operations and by appointment only, please don't mis, uh, we don't want the public to mistake in that for the staff not being out in the field checking things out. Um, I, our executive staff is out in the field checking things out, our field staff, and I like to ex, provide a heartfelt thanks to our field staff. Uh, but working in the parks, working in the public right of way, uh and our code enforcement, our field staff that are out there making sure that the city is in good shape. Um, the parks look fantastic. Um, granted, there's not as many people out, but the parks look, and are being maintained in extremely great shape. Our public rights ways, you know, well, we, we struggle with things sometimes. Uh, just on uh day-to-day maintenance side, staff is doing a great job. So and we're doing additional patrols of, of areas too, from our code enforcement to our um parking enforcement, which is out, even though we're not doing overnight parking, we're doing street sweeping. So our staff is out and present in the field and out in the community even with a pandemic. So and lastly, um, last meeting you uh authorized us to submit to SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments, a uh P O. letter uh related to our RENA numbers, which Mr. Reamer spoke about just a little bit earlier, earlier ago again. Uh, we'll get you copies of that as soon as that's uh ready to, to be sent off. So thank you. Um, thank you for doing, uh, thank you for uh allowing us to do that and we'll uh, we'll get that out this week. That's it, sir.
Great, thank you. All right. Uh, item number twelve, update from our city attorney, Mr. Murphy.
Given the hour and the amount of legal things that we've talked about tonight, I think I'll forego this evening and have a good one for you in November.
Very, very wise legal decision you've just made. Thank you. Okay, uh, why don't we move then to item number thirteen? Council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any, uh, anyone that needs to report out? I don't believe we've had any, any recent meetings, so. Um, all right, so we'll uh conclude that item. We'll now move to item fourteen. Uh, council item separate from the city manager's regular agenda. We'll start with councilmember Sternquist.
I just have something I want council to think about. Maybe we can talk about it at a later date, but um in the city of Eastvale, uh, there was a, a family that came to visit over at my place and it, it was Eastvale. Happened to be
Breaking up, Cindy.
Yeah, plus they're happy.
Cindy, why don't you go ahead and start over? We didn't hear the last part. Maybe if everybody goes on mute, that might help.
People were getting, getting out, clean red. Okay, my son come over and he, there happened to be
Okay, well, why don't we come back to Okay, well, why don't we come back to. Let me, let me.
Can you hear?
We can hear you now. Go ahead and try it again.
Can you now?
Yes, we can hear you. Try it again. No, no.
Okay.
Not happening.
In the city of Eastvale.
Cindy, try turning off your video camera. It might help your connection better.
Yeah, turn your video camera off. There you go. Try it again.
You hear now? You can hear?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, can you hear now? Yes.
We can hear you.
So. In the city of Eastvale, when people dispose of their old mattresses. They go to Home Depot, I think, or Lowe's and they buy the. Can you hear?
Yes.
Yes, okay, they buy these giant trash. What do you call them? Trash bags that are meant just for mattresses. And I thought that was such a clever idea because there must be about five or six mattresses out in my neighborhood. And even if it rains, the mattresses stay out there. They get soaking wet and it looks terrible. So I thought that was a very clever thing that they imposed in the city. That if you dispose of a mattress, you have to put it in the. They just have to put it in this two dollars nicer that looks than a total mattresses. And I thought how much. Back about six throughout your city. So just so I think it might be, we can. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Viscara?
Okay.
You're on mute, Fernando.
There we go. I won't even try. No, I have nothing further, thank you.
And we can tell it's getting late. Okay, Councilmember Mann, any final thoughts?
I just want to add Mr. Cook's comments. Yeah, I appreciate the work on Las Tunes. I didn't get a chance to drive through parts of it. That was. The work is pretty well done considering. We have parts of Las Tunes that we haven't touched for. I want to say more than twenty, thirty years. Probably Ali could speak better, speak more towards that. So I think it's nice and hopefully the night work has worked out well. I did notice there was quite a bit of dust during some periods of times and I know. We had folks out there trying to, you know, keep that down as much as possible. But it's one of those things that you kind of have to just plow through in order to get the work done, so. Much appreciation to that and thanks for sending us those pictures, Brian. When you were out there. And also on a final note, just want to. Give a shout out and extend my appreciation to our park staff for setting up the. The drive-through Halloween trickery that we're going to have. I know a lot of, as we said, a lot of stuff is either on virtual. If it's not virtual, then it's just socially distant, so looking forward to that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Potem, you?
I think, Miss Mayor, nothing further, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple of things. I see that Mr. Matsumoto is still with us, so thank you. I. I just want to point out that Parks and Rec is in a fantastic job. Keeping alive many of our annual events, be it that it's May, they're going virtual, of course, but. Better that than nothing, and I just want to remind everybody that we have the Veterans Day. Event coming up in November and just to remind everyone that. You have the opportunity to send in a little video submission to Parks and Rec so that they can have that. Ready for the event. And as Councilmember Mann mentioned, we have the Halloween Drive-Thru Event. On Halloween, which is going to be a neat event that's from six to nine o'clock. On Halloween evening, so looking forward to that. So again, thanks, Adam, for keeping those things alive and thinking outside the box. Fantastic job by you and your staff. Also, one of the things that came to my mind when we were discussing. I think it was the ADUs and talked about different handouts and things like that. I think it would be beneficial, at least for me, and I don't know how other council members feel about this, but. I would like to maybe when we do a handout, especially when we do something like this where it's new, something that we're going to give to the public. Maybe throw that in our box so that we can have a heads up on that too. I know it's additional reading, but a lot of times we're asked questions about things and, you know, since we don't get into City Hall very much, if you could. Perhaps maybe put a packet of those together for us, especially as we progress through a lot of these new things. And as we create those those handouts for the public, I think it would be beneficial for us to have them as well. And answer a lot of our questions so we don't have to bug you guys about it, so. Just Mr. Cook, if you could maybe facilitate that, it'd be appreciated. All right, and so that's it for me. We will now move on to item fifteen, any additional public comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any email requests at this time?
No, Mayor, there are no requests.
And I'm sure all of our guests have gone, correct?
No callers.
No callers, okay. They're in bed by now. All right, so. That will conclude our meeting tonight, so we are adjourned. Thank you very much for sticking around. Good meeting and all of you stay safe, stay healthy and we'll see you all soon. Take care.